I'm calling.
Ready?
February 1st meeting of the zoning board to order. And the first order of business is the approval of the agenda.
Can you roll call first then?
Well, I.
Before we approve the agenda?
We've got one, two.
I have to call it for the, for the record. Okay. Chair J.C. Infam.
Present.
Vice Chair Rudy Davis.
Present.
Board Member Angela Berry.
Present.
Board Member Brenda Buena Serra.
Present.
Board Member Hart McIntyre.
Present.
City Manager Kyle Reeffler.
Here.
And City Attorney Randy Mora.
Present.
You had a chance to look at the agenda. Is there an approval?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion carried. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Review of the draft to the comprehensive plan. Are we going to start with the attorney or is Linda going to be here or?
So Linda's en route. She's coming over the bridge right now. So she will be here shortly. And Linda, for purposes of the record, is the representative of Ford Penellas, who's been assisting with the comprehensive plan process. Before we continue on that, I want to give you a little bit more exposition on where we are in the process.
Sure.
So we had a meeting roughly two weeks ago discussing the proposed revisions to the comprehensive plan based on the Ford Penellas review for compliance to align our code with new statutory requirements that are required in a comprehensive plan, like a statement of property rights and things like that. During the course of the last meeting, as the minutes reflect, there was also a review done for the members to individually review the comprehensive plan and consider whether there was any additional policies or objectives that this body wanted to recommend to the commission to adopt as we amend the comprehensive plan. And that was based in part on the explanation that your comprehensive plan is like your constitution for land development. No development can be approved that is in conflict with the comprehensive plan. Land development regulations, your code on heights and things, all those flow from your comp plan. And so we wanted to make sure this was an informed process and detailed review. The goal today is to finalize any of the recommendations from Ford Penellas to gain any input and potential consensus direction from this body. That means a general agreement. Maybe not everybody agrees, but if there's at least three of you who say, yes, we'd like to see some kind of policy to this effect put in place, then ultimately what we on the staff side will do is come forward with a proposed ordinance that captures all of this and have a public hearing, no different than this one, but with advertisement run in the newspaper in advance to check statutory boxes. And then that whatever product comes out of that meeting will be what is relayed to the commission. So there will be a third meeting as it relates to this comp plan process. So that's where we stand in the process as of today. I was just explaining procedurally where we are and that we would. My recollection was generally there was consensus approval of Ford Penellas's recommendations. If having had more time to digest that, there was any wish to review them, please do so. There was a question before we went on record for the meeting as to what Ford Penellas's role is, that this is an interlocal agreement that they operate to provide planning services, which we are required to possess for the purposes of comprehensive plan review, that while they are a interlocal body that may serve multiple jurisdictions, as the law defines it, there's no conflict for their operation across jurisdictions, meeting those individual jurisdiction's needs. So beyond that, that is where we stand presently. The aim today is to make sure we have all your input so we can come to you one more time with a, here's a clean version of what's coming out of the Land Planning Association, PNZ, wearing your hats, and go forward. Are there any questions or confusion on that? I know it was a bit of word salad. I want to make sure we're clear on where we are procedurally.
One observation. We had feelings of additional suggestions.
Yes, sir.
Not actually changes. Where do you want that at?
That's for today's discussion and how you as chair of this body wishes to go through anybody's individual notes, whether you wish to go member by member, go through the document chronologically. If you each have prepared notes, say, you know, these are my notes on this. Ultimately, that's up to you. But what staff is looking for today is consensus direction on any remaining revisions, additions, deletions that you have so that we can incorporate them into a document that this body would ultimately approve.
I would just like to hear from Kyle, being the new city manager. Now, I'm new to this and I know you've been here for a long time, but new role for you. What is it that you want to get out of this and how will this, how will this assist you in what you're doing? What are the things you would like to see planning and zoning address specifically, if anything? I don't mean to put you on the spot.
No, I mean.
This becomes your operating bible, so to say.
Those areas that, you know, you feel you can create more vision of what, where we're going or what we're going to be or stay, stay the same or, just so I can relay that back to everything else. I mean, this is just where we see, where we see the future.
Is there anything in particular or general that you think is lacking? That it needs more time looking at vision?
I mean, we talked about the Marina. I thought that was a good topic.
Seems to be a hot one right now. You look at the work section and everything as well occurred.
You may consider putting something in about preserving what we do have as open space. I don't know how much wording. I can check back through, but I mean, just from considerations of the past, I think that would be important.
Okay. For instance?
For instance, when we were looking at every lot that was donated for open space, for parks, in a way to make money, so.
In other words, the vision should address whether or not that should be a revenue generator or a, more of a benefit convenience, perhaps, for the citizens here?
Sure. I mean, if it was donated for a purpose, you may want to say, you know, in the future, we plan to keep it that way or.
Right.
If you address something like that, at least it's kind of laid out and described as the vision. So if it comes up as an option in the future, it's, you know, we can look back to this.
So do we have the discussion more in detail now or wait till we get down to the specifics?
I think we should have a discussion around it. Which we would start with you and we'll go around the table and if there's any suggestions additional to what we covered with Linda last time, we should tack them on the end and give Linda a chance to prepare it.
So my, my hope is, my, my role here is to ensure our process is sound. But that process can look like a lot of different things. What my advice to you is, is that this body not be too concerned today with what I would call wordsmithing. How are we going to write? That's what we want to do. How do we write it? We are taking, in addition to all the software we have to record and transcribe, we as, on the staff side, will be taking notes. If you came out today with a recommendation that was like, we wish to preserve the historical character of Bel Air Beach by ensuring that primary colors, those visible in a beach ball, are incorporated into any city branding, which you could do. It's not really a compliment thing, but let's say that's what you were trying to do. I will handle what that sentence looks like and present it to you at the next meeting. And what I'm looking for is, do you guys all agree that primary colors should be, you know, blah, 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 blah? So, you know, for example, we had a very similar meeting in Indian Rock Beach two weeks ago on short-term rentals, where they were going through their full regulatory scheme. And we spent two hours. But what we did was we went through, we went through the template document and said, what do you want to change? What do you want to change? Give me your notes. I'll synthesize them. All I'm looking for, or all we are looking for, is synthesis and consensus. If we have your general agreement on synthesized still thought policy objective, that's fine by me whether you guys do it individually based on your individual druthers and, you know, and aims. That's one thing. If we do it sequentially, having looked through the different planning elements, because there are elements to a comp plan. There's recreation, flooding, all those things. We can go through the elements. I defer to you folks. It's your meeting. We just want to make sure that anybody who wishes to be heard is heard and we get a distilled product that we can move forward with.
Okay. Linda, do you have any guidance that you would like to present?
I was going to make a suggestion that we go through the guidance that I received last time and how I wrote it into the document. Everywhere that you see yellow highlighting is a change that has been made since the first draft. And if you'll allow me, I can go through those and explain why I did what I did.
That's a starting.
Okay.
That's a good idea.
And I do apologize that I was running a bit late.
You're not forgiven. Just continue.
Can I just stop for a second? I have approved the agenda and now we've moved on to item three. Don't we need to do two first? Approve the five minutes?
Yes.
Okay. Would I interject at this point? If I have a point in the minutes that I don't feel represent what we said?
Yes. If we're going to do that, yes. If we're going to do approvals of minutes now, yes. So J.C., would you call for approval of the minutes?
Sure. I was just wondering.
And then if you have something you'd like to say about that.
Okay. Okay. Let's go to number two. Approval of the January 18th Planning and Zoning Board Minutes.
Before we call for a motion to approve those, I'd like to look at one particular point that is in those minutes that I don't think actually represents clearly the discussion we had. It's on page three, first quote, first paragraph, motion made by Mr. McIntyre, Mr. Davis, skipping down to the last sentence where it says, "And if possible, impose some economic gain or penalty for those that travel down this way." I was more under the impression that it was looking, "And if possible, impose impact fees or charges to Clearwater Beach for lack of road improvements to handle their traffic issues, forcing excessive traffic through our community that impedes our ability to use our roadways." Something along those lines. But I don't understand this economic penalty for those who've traveled down this way. Is that my point?
Yeah. When we discussed it, at the very end, I said, you know, some, is there some way for Bel Air Beach to gain an economic benefit? I don't know necessarily a penalty, but we talked about the potential of having some kind of toll access that would, would either go to the benefit of Bel Air and or thwart the amount of traffic that chooses to come this way.
And what do you want to strike then, Rudy?
And if possible.
Can I make a point?
Yeah.
I mean, I, I, I just went by what was said on the recording. So I can't put something that wasn't said, but I can, like you said, if you want to strike something or if you want to clarify something, I can do that, but I just can't put something that's not, that wasn't actually said.
This is verbatim what was actually said at that time?
It's not, that part right there is not exactly verbatim, but it is the words that were used. So if you feel like the wording isn't exactly what was meant, you know, like J.C. said.
I guess where I'm, I'm having some issue is it says, impose some economic gain or penalty for those that travel down this way.
Yeah. That was said and, and maybe that's not what the spirit of it was. And I can go back and listen to it and if you tell me what you.
So I gather then Hart, that what you were saying here was that you'd like to see a toll put on that road as.
I don't even know how practical that is. It was just kind of a hip shoe comment to say, the citizens here are the ones that are inconvenienced by, by the heavy amount of traffic that we incur because people can't come down 60 and they're trying to get to Clearwater. And I don't disagree with what you're saying. Somehow if we can, I don't know how we would impose anything on Clearwater or have them improve, but.
You know, when it's a county road, we really have no way to put up a toll booth or anything else.
Yeah. It was sort of a short hip wish list.
As we talked before, all we can really do is suggest something be done on a particular issue. And here, so look at ways the county can help us control this traffic flow so that road capacity is not exceeded. And to me, it's more a matter of, to me, the whole root issue is that Clearwater has allowed expansion of its density in a far greater degree than it has provided traffic control and egress and ingress and egress within their own borders, forcing it over on us. So how do we say?
If I may?
Yeah.
I, given with the administrative role of the minutes, my suggestion is it seems like your concern is everything after the word "flow" as it characterizes how you would go about addressing. So the sentence presently reads, "A motion was made by Mr. McIntyre and seconded by Mr. Davis to explore means of controlling the traffic coming southbound from Clearwater and coming westbound across the Bel Air causeway to look at ways that the county can help us control this traffic flow and so that our road capacity is not exceeded and if possible imposed." And so it seems like everything after the "so" is what's presenting a concern.
Not exceeded.
So that our road capacity, okay, after the, after where it says is not exceeded. The "and if possible" part is your concern. My suggestion to you is we're not having a policy debate in the minutes. It's simply capturing the spirit and verbatim of what was, or, or nature of what was said, that you just move to strike the everything after not exceeded.
And the chair would entertain an amendment.
Yeah, sure. I don't want to look foolish in trying to suggest something we have no authority to do. So I make a motion that we put a period after exceeded in that paragraph and strike the rest from the minutes.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay. Thank you. Then I move to approve the minutes of the January 18th, 2023 Planning and Zoning Board.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Inanimate. Okay. Any other consideration?
All right. Now we go with the first case.
Please.
Yeah.
Next case?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. We'll continue with what Linda was suggesting.
Okay. As I mentioned, the changes that I made from last month are highlighted in yellow. So I made some corrections on the title page over this, the city council and our permanent city manager. The next changes, highlighted changes are on page one of the goals, objectives and policies in the future land use element. So there were two classes of, of changes that I've suggested here. One is based on the discussion from the last meeting. There are a few others that I made based on a conversation I had with the city manager after that meeting, where he talked about some concerns with some non-conforming hotels. So there are a few changes you'll see here that we haven't discussed yet, but I've included them for your consideration. And that on page one of the future land use element, where currently the language reads that you, your city has a totally residential character, I changed it to primarily and.
That's why?
And that, that'll bring in, that ties into the discussion of how to deal with the non-conforming hotel units. If you decide you don't want to do anything with that topic, then these changes can come back out. But these are just, there's a cluster of changes that surround that discussion and that'll make more sense as we go through the next couple of pages.
Does primarily open the door though for someone to say, well, you didn't say this is excluded.
Right.
That will be regulated through your future land use categories and your zoning districts.
So what's the purpose in going from saying total to primarily? Because isn't, isn't it the city's position that it should be and remain residential?
It might make more sense if I can skip ahead to the next change and I think that'll explain it a little better. It's on page three, the goals, objectives and policies.
And it says discourage the introduction of annual land use.
Right. But the reason that that language is drafted that way is to accommodate changes on page three. And Kyle, please correct me if I've misinterpreted anything, but the, my understanding is there are some multifamily units that are renting out some of their units and acting as almost de facto hotels.
Yes.
And.
In the residential medium. But the idea was, was given to me from a resident that what, if we should consider allowing future, or at least hotel use so that we can collect the bed tax for what they're already doing.
Yeah. Then you have the whole thing with vacation rental by owner or Airbnb and you set a precedent and it's acceptable.
It's happening.
But it doesn't have to, you don't have to acknowledge it, do you?
Well, you don't.
And we don't have to go down that road. It's already happening, fine, but let's stop it. Personally, I don't want to turn into an Indian Rock Beach. It is awful over there.
Now's the time to stop it. We're going through something similar in North Carolina right now. I'm trying to stop vacation, short-term rental. And because nothing was written into the deeds or the bylaws, it's going to be very, very difficult to, to prevent it. And, and I'm, I'm absolutely opposed to, to having any kind of short-term rental. And if we insert language here that implies there's some acceptance, to me, that's just a can of worms.
I agree.
Yeah. Leave totally.
I totally.
I guess I have a question about the new law where it says that the citizen has the right to do whatever with their land.
Are you referring to the language inserted into? I'll let Linda address what that is and is not.
Okay. The private property rights element is a separate issue. That's a new law stating that local governments have to recognize existing private properties, rights, but it doesn't create new private property rights. And it does say that use of land and property can be limited by local ordinances. So that means you can still control things through your zoning districts.
Just as long as we're not violating the law already, then that's fine.
No, not, not that law. In terms of what I've proposed here, it adds a use called temporary lodging. And that has a specific definition under the countywide plan where that is less than thirty, rental of less than 30 days. I believe it's four times a year. I'm not sure if the definition is in here. But we recognize temporary lodging as a different definition from vacation rentals. Temporary lodging is a separate use. Under state law, vacation rentals can happen in properties that are designated residential. This would create a designation other than residential and allow those properties to do short-term rentals.
I don't know.
If the designer isn't to go down that road, that is.
No, no, no.
Okay. I drafted it for your consideration.
No. I appreciate that.
I don't have a.
We lived 15 years in Indian Rock Beach and moved over here for, you know, before the Airbnbs and things. On our street, there's eight houses now for sale. People that have been there for 20 years are moving out because the police can't handle the noise when they get called at two o'clock in the morning. It's not a residential town. It's turning into a vacation land, which is fine if that's what they want. But we're stuck in the middle between Clearwater and Indian Rock Beach. Please, don't let that happen.
I think the objection here is the word total.
Yeah. Well, it's anything that implies that there's some tolerance for it. And it just doesn't seem that, it doesn't seem to fit the neighborhood. I think the majority of people here would say, we have no tolerance for that. We don't want any of it.
So then we retain the word totally instead of primarily. Is that what we're looking for as a, as a whole word?
Yes.
Probably. But I think there's even more discussion about these, these hotels. You know, they're, they're there, they're grandfathered. But one, one of the things that we've worked on in North Carolina is, if you are vacation rental, they're cleared now because we're going to change the bylaws so that future you can't and it won't be grandfathered. You can, it'd be grandfathered to the original owner, but once that deed changes title, there's no more, there's no more opportunity to make that a short-term rental. I don't know what exists here with these hotels and how they.
Allow me to address just a little bit of the legal landscape on this issue. The Florida legislature in 2011 adopted a statute amending, Florida statute 509032 sub seven sub B concerning temporary lodging and specifically short-term rentals. At the time, what they did was they preempted the local, a local ability, a local jurisdiction's ability to regulate short-term rentals, provided there was nothing on the books before June 1, 2011. In 2014, they revisited that. It was a broad preemption and they narrowed it to say that a jurisdiction cannot adopt any, adopt or, or enforce any matter, any measure that prohibits short-term rentals, regulates their duration or regulates their frequency unless such regulation was in place before June 1, 2011. In this jurisdiction, I've looked at the issue as it relates to another issue. As it concerns short-term rentals, your ordinances presently prohibit them in your, in your districts based on, based on something that was adopted before June 2011. This, this body is, is.
Only in residential law.
Only in residential law.
Yeah. So residential medium has no restriction.
So residential.
Residential medium, the condominium, it has no restriction except for the Cado Association Council's covering.
Yeah. And we can't, we do not affect the, the bylaws incorporating documents, association documents of any condominium or anything. But inasmuch as in any zoning district, it has been prohibited or has been clear since before June 2011. You are right to consider whether you're amending in a way that may affect that. And I'm not going, I'm not in a position presently to answer that definitively for you one way or the other. That's what this deliberation should be. But I want to be clear for you so you know what your city can and can't do. There's no like, you can't play peek-a-boo with it and say like, we're going to see if we're going to let them for a little bit and then say, you know what, we didn't like it and prohibit it again later. It's either you had it on the books now almost 12 years ago or you don't. And some jurisdictions, they don't or didn't. And it was a, the history of that is sort of beside the point at this point. I just wish to make sure you folks understood what was being discussed.
So the jeopardy is if you change anything, there's the jeopardy. And since you said you can't address each specific item to know that it, it would affect what the state was saying, our point is don't change anything. Don't put us in jeopardy on anything that has anything to do with that topic.
Temporary lodging.
Yes, I agree.
And allow the Claire Planning and zoning then, I think, would be saying, our vision is this remains residential, remains single family, and we're not in favor of anything that promotes or supports.
Correct.
Short-term rental of, of any sort. We can't do anything about the ones that are already there other than if, what happens if they get blown away? What happens now that we get a?
There's policies that addresses that.
Wait a minute. Let's go back to the, the chair would entertain a motion that leave the word totally in.
In. Why? Suck in that motion.
No, I didn't make a motion. I said I would consider hearing the motion.
So moved.
Okay. So move. Is there a second?
Suck in.
Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Next case. I'm not sure yet.
Okay.
Okay. So this, these changes on page one are tied to a number of other changes which I will also remove based on the discussion, the clear consensus.
Point those out.
Okay. So on page three.
Number three.
My suggestion was to create a resort facilities overlay category so that if you chose to allow those units, you could put it over your multifamily properties. But I'm again hearing the clear consensus that that is not what you want. So I will remove that language.
What's the difference between a hotel and timescale and resort? Why resort?
Resort, resort facilities overlay is the name of the category. Temporary lodging refers to hotel, motels, condo hotels, and that is distinct from a vacation rental, which is typically a house. It can be multifamily also. But temporary lodging is saying, I will allow this property to act as a hotel under my local regulations. And that's what this overlay would do if you wanted to use it. But I'm understanding that that's not what you're, you're wanting.
What is timeshare permit? Because they declare themselves as timeshares, not motels or hotels. So is that my correct?
Are you talking about the condos?
I think it was a motel and definitely would not.
The motel is definitely a motel, but the ones up on the north end of the city that have always stated to me, land scenes, they were timeshares, meaning...
Not a collage?
Not a collage, up by Harrison.
Yeah, yeah.
That's something I'll need to look up. I suspect that's based on how the local government chooses to define it, that you can define it either as temporary lodging or as residential because it's somewhere in the middle. But I will research that.
And look to see, I know the motel is if it's knocked down, it has to be built back as a condominium. How about those, do we have any wording anywhere? I'm not, I haven't seen any, to my knowledge, that says what happens to them if they get knocked down? Can they come back as a timeshare again or do they have to go strictly condominium?
And what restrictions do we have to keep it from going sky high?
We have height restrictions.
So does the height restriction that's residential apply to the condominiums built as well?
That's citywide.
Yeah, okay, good.
So we're crossing out number three completely?
Mm-hmm.
The yellow markings?
Yes, and that continues on page four.
Okay.
Randy, I have a quick question for you. Can we restrict residential properties to ownership by private individuals and not corporations?
No.
Thank you.
And you can't, you can restrict their use of them though as a Airbnb.
If you had that restriction on the books before June 1, 2011, which it's my understanding you did in at least one district, then yes. But because there's, the way you phrased your question is they, with the pronoun and the antecedent of the question being related to corporate entities, we can't specifically regulate short-term rentals as they relate to corporate owned versus individually owned. The distinction I've seen made is owner occupied, which is sort of a different class, but...
Arse is a general blanket.
There is a general blanket prohibition. But in the event your question was about targeting corporations, not targeting, but regulating corporations as distinct from individuals, and ownership is ownership in private properties.
Okay. Proceed, Lyndon.
On page six, that was another reference to that resort facilities overlay category, which will come out. I did add another sentence to, or a couple of sentences to 1.1.7 policy, just letting you know, it's just a reminder that if you do make any amendment to your future land use map, your local map, you need to also submit it to the county so that it can be, we have a countywide plan map that everybody has to be consistent with. So if you make a change to your local future land use map, we have to make a change to our map as well. And that's just a reminder that that's countywide law.
Problems?
No.
Okay, continue please.
Okay.
Well, I just covered that topic of, we took out everything in yellow, but it was impacted by primarily the totally, right?
Right.
So six, on six, we remove the resort facilities overlay resort, okay.
Right, but we leave that other highlighted sentence. Okay. Page eight is where I tried to capture, I'm sorry.
Could I go back? But one, you've gone past a point that I wanted to ask about. That's on page five. And then Wade, you've got primary uses and then recreation facility, semicolon, public beach, water access. I'd like to add slash marina.
Recreation open space.
Where are you at?
Is that?
Page five.
Is that what your marina is designated as?
Five, I'd like to do slash marina.
Just checking the map to verify what designation you have today.
It's residential low.
If that's, if it's residential low, does that mean that a house could be built on that? So that has to be something that's addressed in the vision as we talk about the marina then, unless we want to see a house built there.
The reason it's allowed in residential low, this is a little bit confusing because there are land uses that are allowed under each category, and then there are land use category names. And sometimes there's overlap between those. So what we were just talking about is the recreation open space category, which is typically you would apply it to parks or recreational uses. But underneath your residential categories, you're also allowed to have residential open space uses. And a marina is defined as a residential open space use. So you could put it either under the recreational open space category or under one of your residential categories.
So if we go to 1.1.7 dot on page six, you could potentially amend that land use category to go from residential low to recreation?
Yes. Typically, the property owner is the one that initiates that. It is possible to initiate it as a local government, but it's a little more legally...
Did the property owner of that marina, Beller Beach?
Oh, it was the city that property, okay. Well, then you're free to make that amendment.
So if we, if we change it from residential low to recreation, it eliminates any potential in the future for residential use?
Depending on what the permitted uses within the recreational district you're contemplating are, if that's fine.
There's no residential gap.
Yeah, so...
Is that what you're getting at?
What I'm trying to do is make sure the marina is recognized as a marina, city-owned marina. And as this says, recreation facility for, we've got public beach, our public water accesses and the marina. And did it always stay a marina?
That's appropriate.
Does anybody see a big problem in the board with adding a marina?
Yeah.
I think it helps clarify the long-term use of that area there. And it removes confusion. If somebody comes in, an investor comes in and offers the city $4 million, $5 million for that because they want to put something residential, this would prevent that from happening. It would always be here to the benefit of the citizens. And I've got no skin in the game. I don't, I don't use the marina.
Both of us live on the water, but if you look at the map of the city, there's a significant number of landlocked lots in the city. And we've got one little facility down there with how many slips available?
Eighteen.
Eighteen, for all of those people. I mean, not only do I think it should be designated permanent, or we're suggesting by doing this that it is, but at some point down the road, if the rental of it, and that's the city council, that it be for only residents.
I mean, the same though, when we get down to the marina here.
Okay, so for this point only, that my motion is to add slash marina to the end of recreation facility.
Has been a motion made? Is there a second? Any further discussion? Would you repeat the motion?
That on page six, page five, under recreation open spaces, recreation facility, semicolon, public beach, slash water access, after water access, we add slash marina.
Any further discussion?
To follow that, don't we also need to make a motion to change the classification or category?
No.
That is not something you can do during this process and have to be done separately. But once you get past this process, I can help you with that.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried to add the word marina. Next case, Lyndon.
We left off at page, page eight.
When...
It's got Ruby stuck on page six. Somebody had something to say.
I'm just looking at on page six, it says, and we're talking about FARs and ISRs where it says a FAR of .65 and an ISR of .85. But on the previous page five, it says no use of cellular three, a far of .25 and an ISR of 60. When is it, 85 or 60?
Under recreation open space, it's 60. The 85 refers to the institutional category.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions before we get to page eight?
Okay.
Okay, top of the page, policy 1.1.10 is intended to capture the discussion about preserving the marina. That originally was down below in policy 1.2.2. That objective covers incompatible and inconsistent uses, which was sort of a negative. So I took the more positive statement about the marina and put it in the objective above that. That's why it moved.
And would that be where we put the language that says, in effect, what you were saying, Rudy, is that there's a whole lot more slips here than, I mean, a whole lot more people here than there are slips. And that at all times, full-time residents, not just property owner, but full-time owner residents should have priority, number one priority on the slip, period. Because you could, I looked at it and said, well, you could have an owner resident, you could have a part-time occupied, you could have a property owner, non-resident, and then a non-resident. And it gets complex as I'll get out. But it seems that, I know I listened to the council meeting the other night, the workshop, I thought Shirley's recommendation that you come up with a, here's the flat rate for that slip and give the owners the option, I'll pay that or I won't. You know, if that's what the city's concerned with. But number one should be, this is for a owner, resident, you know, that's here full-time, they should always have priority on that. It's for their benefit, I feel.
I'm not sure about that. If you own property, I think you should have, the residents should have the right, the owner should have a right to rent.
But he's doing it as an investment, not because he's choosing...
I don't know what they're using the property for. We're in a wordsmith situation here.
Well, now's the time to do it.
You mean on the slip?
No, 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 no. I think what we're talking about is, let's say I come in and I, I buy a house here and then I turn around and I rent it out. I never lived there, but I live over in, you know, I live in, and I want to have a place, you know, to dock my boat out here. I don't think that person should have the priority of someone who is a full-time living resident.
Can I add something?
I'd like to comment from the crowd.
Quick guidance for...
Can you just state your name and...
Yes, Bill Lusk, Hibiscus Drive West. Just stop me where I'm out of bounds on that. This question, because I don't know where the comprehensive plan goes in regards to debt. Excited to hear you all are looking so far out and protecting that land. Here's how other cities deal with like situations. One, we all have limited number of slips per the number of residents. Name the city, it applies. You've established you want that land long-term for that use. Perfect. Other cities don't go to the granular use or the language, and I don't know if it applies in comprehensive plans or it becomes a council setting regulations and guidelines. What they do is do use language like priority, number one first. But supply and demand dictates that you need to have safety nets. And that means secondary would be property owner, not primary resident. And third fallback, having those lists of buckets of people that put their names on every list in every marina. So you want to be careful with just excluding yourself from residents because we have seen times, in economic times, and I could tell you twice in the last 20 years, slips are empty. So you're going down the right path, don't know where, Randy, the exercise needs to be limited because some of this is council decision, I'm assuming. So just wanted to add how others do it.
I'd like to refer to the attorney. Can we as a committee limit what type of resident can rent this slip? What type of property owner can rent this slip?
Short answer, not in the comp plan. And that's not really the charge of this body. What you're talking about has to do with administrative policies.
And that's administrative.
Typically addressed in a resolution or something of the sort. What you can do, for example, is, and I know that this sounds very high-minded and, you know, esoteric, but there is a value in doing these sorts of things in a comp plan, is if you've already modified one thing on page five saying you wish for this to be your recreational district, having a policy or an objective that states something to, the city shall remain committed to the preservation of its recreational infrastructure for the benefit of its property owners and residents, period. You've already lumped this into its recreational infrastructure or otherwise, presuming that's adopted. And now you're saying like, we wish to preserve, generally speaking, we wish to preserve this for the, we wish to preserve our recreational infrastructure, our trails, our bridges, whatever that is, a pickleball park, whatever you have, tennis courts, for the benefit of residents and property owners. A policy objective like that is more in line with how an issue like what you're discussing is addressed in a comprehensive plan typically. And while I am not a planner, I'm an attorney, it's, believe it or not, there are distinct, Ms. Fisher, is that in line with your understanding as a planner?
Yes, that would, my recommendation would be similar, that you keep the language very high level and give priority to it, to residents. I don't have as much heartburn with including the marina, but I wouldn't put it in the land use portion because it's really not a land use issue. That would go more in the recreation open space element.
So we can address it later on in the recreation?
You can, when, when you say address it, you can address it in the manner that we're kind of talking about, not addressing it in the manner of saying, here's how we're going to put the tier of the hierarchies and order and flow. That's for the commission and management to decide.
From my perspective, the issue is trying to provide some sort of guidance to the commission, to the city manager, so that there's a clear way of working through who gets the slip and then it becomes static, not something that changes for each commission.
That was pretty clear what you said. Thank you. Carry on.
Okay. We're not at the recreation open space element yet, but before we forget, is that something that's the, deserve this board to include in the...
Not in it.
In the recreation.
In recreation open space element. Okay. All right. So that was policy 1.1.10. And moving down to policy 1.2.1, there is an existing policy about motel uses shall not be permitted to expand. Motel is a pretty specific term, so my suggestion is to broaden that to non-conforming temporary lodging uses. That would include any kind of hotel or condo hotel that doesn't conform to your plan.
I'd like to see that defined a little better. Non-conforming temporary lodging.
Mm-hmm.
I'm sure you understand that as a profession, but to me, it's, non-conforming with what?
Doesn't imply that there is conforming temporary lodging. Yes, there is here.
Well, I wrote that word non-conforming in there because we've, to go along with the potential suggestion for adding that resort facilities overlay, that we're now not going to do that.
Well, let's put the word motel back in.
Motel slash timeshare slash anything that isn't. Motel slash time share slash anything that isn't.
Motel's a motel.
Yeah, but that's not all that we have. We've got motels, we've got time shares.
Well, I know that.
Temporary lodging, excuse me, I've lost my voice all of a sudden, temporary lodging covers all those things.
Okay.
You don't have a definitions section in your comp plan, but I can add one to your data analysis. Apologize for my voice. You would use the same definitions as are currently in the countywide plan. Again, by countywide law, you need to do that. So if there's a question of how something is defined in your plan, you can just refer to the countywide plan, but I can also take those definitions and put them in your data analysis.
If you take out.
And make sure that's all right.
That's all seems in line with me as far as.
If you take out non-conforming and just make it temporary lodging, doesn't that cover both conforming and non-conforming then?
Ostensibly, yes, I will tell you that that is a distinction with a difference, generally ordinarily understood to be a distinction with a difference such that you're better off ordinarily addressing non-conformities explicitly when you're addressing non-conformities, because they are an aberration from the norm. You wish to make sure you are making it explicit to any party reading it, that you knew that you were either use the conjunctive, conformities and non-conformities, or call them out specifically. But just sort of saying, I'm sure it's kind of clear, we need not add that, I think creates more problems on the backend.
So what are you saying, we leave it as motel or non-conforming temporary lodging?
I don't make policy recommendations like that. Ultimately, that's, as frustrating as that is, ultimately, what you folks wish to do is up to you, how you accomplish that I can help with.
If the intent is to include hotels, motels, condo hotels, anything of that sort, and temporary lodging is an umbrella term that's an established.
Well, your definition of what non-conforming is in the rear would cover that.
And non-conforming is a use that is not currently permitted by your comp plan or land development.
All right, that's, that's good.
That sounds fine.
Okay.
Okay.
So we're leaving?
Do we need a motion on that?
No, she can add to it.
It says not conforming.
Yeah, we're just going to leave it the way it's currently drafted.
Okay.
All right. On page nine, there was just a typo correction. Highlighted term is on page 14.
On page 12, before you get there, number seven, it says the MPO should not be for the analysis, on number seven.
Oh, thank you for touching that, thank you. So page 14, this was just something that was mentioned in passing when we went over this objective and policy last time about how to deal with e-bikes and whether they're different from regular bikes. So I'm suggesting just adding a policy, saying the city will coordinate with Ford Pinellas and neighboring jurisdictions to regulate, the state term is micro-mobility devices, and that includes e-bikes and scooters. So that's suggested language.
Can the city, can the city, if it wants, say, no mi, what do you call it, micro?
Micro mobility devices.
Can you say, no micro-mobility devices? Can it be more restrictive than Pinellas County's ordinance?
Yes and no. Yes, it can be done by ordinance, in terms of what our code says we allow and don't allow. And that's a more recent development, as recently as 2021, was when we gained the ability to prohibit them, for example, on our beaches, and in 2020, the ability to prohibit them on roads and sidewalks. But that's an ordinance regulation, not a comp plan regulation. And so again, it's the distinction between the sort of high-minded, we wish to coordinate with Ford Pinellas and assert whatever statutory authority we have to regulate, and then later we implement what that regulation looks like. Because this is, these are not our land development regulations, these are not our codes of ordinances, we don't, in our comp plan, we're not going to say the skate park closes at four, but we can later adopt an ordinance or resolution saying, sorry, skate park closes at four. And in our comp plan, we say something like, skate park shall be open during, maintain very reasonable hours for enjoyable recreation, and then you do the hard work later.
My experience is prejudicable, I haven't been over in Fort Lauderdale for 30 years, and the e-bikes over there became a disaster. People couldn't walk on sidewalks, bikes couldn't ride in bike lanes, and the city tried to get them, tried to get them banned, but couldn't.
Is he okay, Linda?
Oh, I thought.
All right.
I don't, I don't want to dominate this.
No.
Does the e-bike bother anybody else? Or scooters?
I think it's covered by ordinances through law enforcement, as far as I'm concerned, and ordinances.
I don't believe that your community, while I don't have an encyclopedic knowledge of all of your code restrictions, I don't believe your community presently regulates it, it does have the ability to regulate it, whether it has the desire is a different discourse. And of course, all of you as private citizens have the ability to say, beyond the comp plan discussion, to go to your representative, your council people and say, hey, this is an issue I'd like you to take up, look at, whatever you always have to adjust, just as the broader discussion on the Marina and waitlist and the like is happening outside of this context. So the same is true for this or any other issue. From a comp plan perspective, it would, if you wish to address micro-mobility at all, within the, whether that be in the recreation or transportation realm, wherever best suited, that would be, it would be appropriate to address it if you wish to, it's not inappropriate. It's also not required, it's ultimately up to you, what you folks want in your, in your comp plan.
I don't think, there's so many ordinances and law enforcement to cover these things.
Okay, again, it's just a suggestion. I did put in the phrase neighboring communities, because this, these are conversations that are happening up and down the barrier islands. And so if you decide to go in that direction as a community, you don't have to reinvent the wheel, you can coordinate with what everybody else has done, and Ford Pinellas can help with that process.
By stating it this way, it doesn't restrict us from being more restrictive?
Correct.
Okay.
All right, Linda.
So I'm sorry, is the desire to keep this language in or take it away?
I don't see anything wrong with it whatsoever. Is anybody on the board?
Okay, thank you.
While we're on this page, I have. Yeah, well, I was no, we're on 14.
This policy 1.5.2. I really don't like the word benefit economically. It's, we're not looking to benefit, what we're actually looking for is funds to compensate us for having to have additional police control traffic, or security patrols and things like that because of that huge amount of traffic. Can we reword that, just to not say we're looking to benefit economically, but looking to cover cost of probably having to have increased police patrols and traffic controls and security patrols and things like that?
Thank you for pointing that out, because I should have highlighted objective 1.3 in the policies under it.
Page 13.
Yes, so to page 13, I apologize, I missed highlighting that one, but that did come from the discussion that we had last, and I renumbered, I misnumbered the second policy, so thank you for catching that.
What are you going to do, you going to take that out?
Let's, if we can go back to page 13.
Fine.
That objective 1.3 at the bottom.
Fine.
And this was, again, from the discussion last month. The city recognizes that traffic congestion resulting from increased development on Clearwater Beach has had negative impacts on the mobility and quality of life of its residents, and shall seek means to address this issue. So that's just a.
We don't want to get more specific to this, too.
No, that's pretty absurd.
Yeah, all right, so pull 1.5.2 out.
We can, I'm just going through them in order, and then 1.3.1 just says the city shall work with Ford Pinellas, Pinellas County, and the city of Clearwater to explore means of decreasing or diverting southbound traffic into Bellar Beach and Clearwater Beach, and that's the same course issue that was in the minutes. And again, the question about benefiting economically, that was the same discussion that came up in the minutes, and that doesn't have to be in there, but that was a phrase that was used.
The operative benefits economically is, it's not that we're trying to benefit economically from it, we want to control.
Right.
We've got costs that were occurring, and should we be the ones to bear that, whether it's an inconvenience or additional cost in police or whatever?
Yeah, but what I'm just saying is the words benefit economically, to me, don't say that we're looking for compensation as opposed to benefiting.
How about control increased traffic?
Or explore opportunities for funding to mitigate the traffic.
Something like that, rather than we're asking to benefit economically.
But, you know, you keep talking about Clearwater, but Indian Rocks Beach is building as fast as they can, too. So we're going to have to work with our Indian Rocks Beach neighbors, I mean, they're building, knocking down little buildings and building as fast as they can go.
Yeah.
Isn't that just what we were talking about, though? It falls right back on the traffic? When you, when the word toll popped up?
I could change Clearwater Beach to neighboring communities.
That's what I would do.
Okay.
We're getting hit from every angle.
Okay.
Make the same change in 1.3.1, where it says city of Clearwater. And then, policy, which should be 1.3.2, will say, the city shall explore the means, shall explore funding to mitigate the cost of increased traffic flows into Bellar Beach from neighboring communities. All right, so that's page 14. The next change is on page 16. And this was where I had a table of SWF MUD's projections for the city's water use that showed.
Page 15, objective 1.2, there's a period in there that is necessary, first line, in an effort to maintain comma at a period.
Okay. Thank you. So on page 16, originally, we had in a table of projected water use from SWF MUD that showed that the city's actual projected water use was, I believe it was 97 gallons per capita per day. It was the wish of this board to go back to using the county-adopted portable water standard, which is 115 gallons per capita per day. So this highlighted language from 1.1.4, just restores the original language you had in there, and just adds a date, so that we know what water, what county water supply facility or work plan we're talking about. Now, once we get to the data and analysis, I've still included that table in there, just for informational purposes, but it doesn't affect that policy.
All right.
Okay, on page 19.
I just have a question on 17, and Pat didn't call you my band. It says that we provide educational, on 17, 1.2, it says the city provides educational brochures, so that residents can implement water conservation. Do we have brochures, or is that on our website?
Let me find out if the county has more brochures available.
I was just curious if we're actually doing that, or if it's all on our website now, and we should change the language.
I'm sure we can get it on the website if it's not, but the brochures may not be available.
I could change the word brochures to information.
That's probably better, so we don't have to.
Covers a lot of shit, I love that.
Okay. So now moving into the council management and conservation element.
Or, or?
Page 19.
Yeah, okay.
At the top of the page, policy 1.1.7, there was a discussion of, the current policy has boating speed limits in water less than four feet in depth, and it was pointed out that that's not entirely an accurate place to have reduced boating speed limits. So I just changed it to designated manatee protection areas.
I'm still not happy with that paragraph. Reduced speed limits will be set in, they're already there, called slow-speed minimum wakes zones, and it goes out 300 feet from. The issue is really enforcement. They're already there, the problem is they're not being enforced. So I was looking at maybe where it says reduce, reduced speed limits will be enforced, and slow speed will be enforced, and.
Does the city have responsibility to enforce that, or is that strictly an FWC issue?
We saw her, but we rely on the sheriff.
Sheriff's vote. So is that even anything that should be in our comprehensive plan? Because it's already a law in place, no wakes are already established, and we don't have control on, I don't think we do.
So the policy is to coordinate with appropriate agencies? So that would be, if you think that enforcement is not sufficient currently, then this means that you will reach out to the appropriate agency, or the city will, and let them know that it's not being enforced and.
Are we getting too specific? Should we just say, coordinate with the appropriate authorities for all boating regulations? Then it covers whether you're in a manatee zone, or a no wake, or a slow speed, or whatever. We should just be able to call the water and sheriff's department or FWC, and they should handle it from there.
Try, I do it daily. I, I look on the very end of Belle Isle Point, end of Belle Isle Avenue. That finger sticks out into Clearwater Harbor farther than any of the others. So the closest traffic, when people are coming south from Clearwater area, north from Indian Rocks, that is the point they go by. And it's established, the city's already established, that from 300 feet out from the seawall, there's a buoy, a line of buoys, unfortunately, it's three, and they're about 200 yards apart. And the boaters totally ignore them. And I've had offshore racers come by my dock, 20 feet off the end of the dock, at 60 miles an hour rattling the windows. That doesn't happen frequently, but every day, jet skiers, boats, fishing boats, high-speed boats of all kinds are running through that zone, and there are kayakers there, my manatees. So I call the sheriff's department, they don't come out. We'll check it, we don't see it. Water and navigation, put up more buoys, bring more attention to it, because that's really the issue. Nothing's happened, so I keep saying, one of these days, there's going to be a serious boating accident there for people coming out of the fingers on both sides, and here comes a boat by, and he's moving so fast that he can't react, or that other boat can't react, because the timing is going to be so quick, and when it happens, it's just going to be explosion, so. Got my two sent in. I see it every day, nothing gets happened to it. So that's where I was saying, reduce boat, reduce boating speed limits, which are already there, don't need to be set, will be enforced and, will be enforced in designated manatee protection areas. manatee protection areas and slow speed minimum wake zones. That's what I was trying to say earlier. Where the word is set.
Will be enforced.
Change to enforced and after manatee protection areas and slow speed minimum wake zones.
You want that in the form of a motion?
I'm so moved.
Second.
To coordinate with appropriate agencies to make sure it's enforced.
Yeah, does it, because are we putting the onus down on the city to enforce it? And I don't disagree.
Appropriate agencies.
We can talk it like that. Is there a second?
Second.
Now discussion.
What, I don't disagree with what you're saying. It is, it is an issue, but does this lang, is this language going to change what's happening in any way?
Well, it's, to me, it clarifies the situation. And we're saying that in addition to manatees, it should also, it decides to be addressing manatees, that the city shall coordinate with appropriate agencies, which means essentially the sheriff's department and FWC.
So the situation that you're describing is you've been reaching out to them as a private citizen and you haven't gotten results?
Right.
What this is saying is that the city will do it.
City will do it. Put more attention on it.
As a citizen, you can remind them that this policy is in there and, and it has been in there in some form. This is not a new policy we're adding today, but you can remind them that they have stated that they will do this.
Do we need a motion then or?
Do you want me to read this again?
If you could read it one more time, I'd leave that in the picture.
I'm going to start with, okay, I'll do the old paragraph. 1.1.7, since manatee is occasionally frequent Clearwater Harbor near Bel Air Beach, the city shall coordinate with appropriate agencies to ensure that reduced boating speed limits will be strike set and enforced in designated manatee protection areas and slow speed minimum wake zones.
Okay, I have got all of it.
Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
The next changes are on page 24.
Can we look at page 20 real quick? Policy 1.2.3, this is talking about the marina again, that very last sentence. Is that conflicting with the other change we just made on page eight? Except for the yacht club Bel Air Beach Marina.
This is basically saying the, the city shall be residential except it can also have a marina, but it's discouraging commercial uses or redevelopment of, of, okay, actually, I'm sorry, let me read this more closely.
Okay.
This is a confusing sentence.
It's to be residential except for that marina, thank you.
Right. This. I would say this is ambiguously worded. You could read it as shall be residential except for the marina, or you can read it as non-residential units shall be discouraged from redeveloping except from the marina, which implies that we're encouraging redeveloping the marina. So I agree, this needs to be read with.
Why is it called a yacht club?
It's there, so it's on a deed.
Yeah. Development, Wells Family, right? Was that their name? The Wells Development? Mills Development. They wanted to build the Bel Air Beach Yacht Club.
You want to get into a long, ambiguous, convoluted mistake. Legal hassle, mistake. Open that channel.
Well, I think that opens up the, was that land donated or not? And I don't think it was. Maybe submerged land was, but that's for another day. Let's hurry it around.
Point of order, I don't have anything to do with this situation. You want to straighten it out with the logist, with the words?
Yes. So the desire is to preserve the residential character and preserve the marina, and I will make sure this reflects that. Are there any other changes before we get to 24? Policy 1.9.5 is, I was capturing a comment that was made at the last meeting about undergrounding of utilities.
We're here.
On page 24, 24. Policy 1.9.5.
Got it.
Oh, and I apologize, that should be 1.8.5. I need to learn to count. I'll fix that. Does that capture the conversation we had last time?
Carry on.
Okay.
So are you looking at 1.8.5?
1.8.4, I'm sorry. I misnumbered that policy. It is.
One.
It should be 1.8.4, the second policy on page 24. I sometimes am a little indecisive with which objective best fits a policy and I move them around and occasionally I apparently forget to read them for them, so I'm sorry.
Is this where we can add the city exploring opportunities to obtain funding for these types of?
It says seek opportunities, so it could, you could add funding, seek opportunities for funding to relocate or harden infrastructure.
Like grants or?
I wouldn't be very specific, but I think seek opportunities for funding would cover that.
Okay. And on 1.8.3, it says adult living facilities. We had talked about a group home.
Yes, and when we get to the data analysis where we talk about housing, I could not find any evidence that that group home is still here from the PAO. Is that, that was the discussion last time too, that I think that was the belief that the group home was no longer here in the city, so.
I can look into it as well.
Yeah, I didn't see any classification from the property appraisers office that indicated there was one here anymore.
So this would prevent them from being here in the future? It's the vision would be there won't be any of them here in the future. The one that you thought was there, if it's not there anymore, then it would be non-conforming, so it couldn't be rebuilt. Is that correct? Or it couldn't be reestablished as a group home?
This, this really refers to new such facilities. If something were here already, it would be grandfathered.
Right.
But there is also a kind of an escape clause at the end of that policy unless adequate provisions for safe and efficient evacuation and shelter are ensured. So it's not a complete prohibition.
Do we know the history, because I don't, I don't know how long it's been there, how it even got there.
The group home, I don't know any information.
It was in the initial, the one from 2015 or 2016?
This, that language was in your plan that said that, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Okay, at this point, I'm going to call for a five-minute recess.
It's advised not to discuss anything relating to the public hearing during recess.
Linda?
Okay. There is one more change on page 24, and that was just to correct the names of the flood zones to AE and VE. And I believe that is actually the last thing I had to cover in the goals, objectives and policies from last, last time.
We're here.
Moving into the maps section. I'm sorry. I added a map at the request of the board. There's a map seven. That is the structure condition map, and that just maps out the property appraisers office designation of the condition of different properties. We talk in the data analysis, a required thing that we have to include in the data analysis is the condition of residential structures. There's a statement in the data analysis that there are no residential structures that are below average, and that is correct. But this map does have a category for fair because there are apparently some properties that came up as, as fair. So I need to do a little more work on this map because the property appraisers office data is not complete in terms of how they've drawn the parcels, so I need to fix those lines. But I will, this is just an informational map that the, the board requested.
Can I ask you a question on the soils map?
Yes.
I'm trying to find out what Matula and Palm Beach reference. Matula is an island down off of Cape Coral with 750 residents, but there's no reference anywhere to what Matula soil means or beaches or Palm Beach by definition.
Okay, I can get those in at them.
And specifically, is there any negative connotation to any of these soils that you would?
No, it's just informational data. That's something that's mentioned in the statutes as type of supportive data to provide.
Is it for population purposes?
And just for appropriateness of putting structures on the land. But I can certainly get those definitions and include them in the data analysis.
Yeah. I'm kind of thinking for insurance purposes.
Be careful what we put in there.
Yeah, yeah. It's good, I got Matula soil, I might fall in the same category as somebody with a sinkhole into a property, that kind of thing.
This is really not a critical map, so if it's not the desire to keep it in here, I have removed it for some other local governments because nobody really knows what this means. So I can, I can actually take this out if you don't want it in there.
Leave it in.
Leave it in, okay.
Leave it in, but if you could find those definitions. Who created this? Your company?
I made the map, but the data came from the National Resources Conservation Service, their federal bureau.
Okay, so just if you would, get the soil definition.
Are we, have a general discussion now?
We will as soon as Linda gets finished.
There's just a couple changes in the data and analysis. And the first one is on page A5, and that's just a reference to that new map.
There are four, I guess.
Right, so that is.
You're not going to need it.
Any questions on that?
Yeah, so those are the question, the last sentence before the table five, both are owned and maintained by Penous County.
You're on A4.
A4. And that is where I will add the level of service definitions, and I apologize for missing that.
I'm sorry, you're going to do what?
I'm going to add the level of service definitions.
What the D, F, and E means?
Yes, yes.
But for them to say, who, who is saying?
I'm sorry.
Who is, who is saying both are currently operating below their adopted level of service?
The adopted level of service is D, there's a column for that. And then, and I believe that is spelled out in your goals, objectives and policies.
Well, your question, who is determined? Who is the body that has determined that we're operating below those adopted levels going back to your concern we've had about traffic?
They certainly haven't been sending out a little Gulf Boulevard in Bel Air Beach to be able to say that.
So the city, the city is the one that adopts the level of service? And then the operating level of service is calculated by the MPO for Penous determines what level of service each road is operating at.
How do they determine that?
They count the number of cars. There, each roadway has capacity for the number of cars that it can accommodate comfortably. That's, and.
Do they count on the weekends?
They do peak hour, there's an AM and PM peak hour, which is your, the largest traffic flow that you have during, during the, during the week.
So is it, is it an average of, of the 24-hour, seven-day cycle or is it, is it measuring peak only?
It's measuring an average of the peak hour for every day, at least every day of the year.
And define peak?
Rush on. So there's an AM and PM peak.
When's the last time they, well, it says 2022, so they did it in 2022?
Well, they published, they published the report in 2022, I believe it's the data year of that report is a year behind because they published it in the middle of 2022, so they used, the last complete calendar year they had was 2021.
Can we request from the county counts? All they do is put a meter with a tape across, I mean a tube across the road, right? And it's got a calendar?
I don't believe they even do that anymore. It's done by cell phone data. Research is done to show the.
Movement, don't you?
Right, the percentage of people that will have their cell phone on, on an average roadway of that type. And then they'll take the number of cell phone hits that they count and then add an additional factor for the expected people who don't have their phones.
We get it on a phone call.
So the, the issue may be the designation LOS. Maybe D is not the right LOS. We won't until we see the, the definitions, but maybe the LOS is the problem.
And I'm looking in here and I'm not suddenly not.
Is that forced? Is that how we're interpreting it?
Yes.
Is that the worst category?
Yeah, that's the, that's the lowest. That's stop and go traffic basically. But I have to, I may have to amend that because I'm not seeing where, it doesn't specifically say that your LOS is D. It just says deficient roads shall include those operating at peak hour level of service E and F. So I, I got adopted LOS D, I kind of backed that out there. So I can word that to match the language of the policy. They'll be called deficient roadways, though. That's, that is the language, that's the countywide language that everybody uses.
Efficient to the traffic flow.
Yes.
Okay. Can, can we request the county do a actual count by putting one of those machines and tape across the road? Do they have such a?
I don't know, but I can ask my coworkers who work on the transportation side, because they're the ones that do those kinds of.
Spring break.
I'd be willing to channel a red alert one. If they'll let me, let us put it across the road, do our own count.
Yeah, we used to have a person that, that was his whole job was to go lay those cables out on the roadway, major roads all around the county, but he retired and we switched to the Bluetooth.
Bluetooth is very accurate. I mean, that's what all the applications run off of these days. So your map system on your phone that gives you that really accurate time prediction is from that data. I guess I'm awful school. I'm sure they have numbers that they can compare, but.
Couldn't the sheriff do that for us?
Sheriff's got those boxes now. They don't even put the, well, they do the speed check, but the box is, because everybody knows what the, the lines are. Oh, they have calendars on them? The ones that show speed, your speed is, does that have a calendar on it? It might, I can ask the captain.
You can find out.
I'd like to see some weekend numbers, not just peak hour. If it's a peak hour, it's only doing money through Friday ice. And our problem is.
The weekends.
Make this one of our suggestions. Did we have an actual count?
I'll get more information. I believe peak hour varies with the roadway, so that if you have a roadway that is more congested on weekends, that peak hour should just be the most active hour of the month.
Okay. You're going to get that information for us, including?
What the LOS means.
Including what are, what are the weekend numbers?
Right.
If we don't have them, can we get it? Okay.
All right. Any questions before page A7?
A5. D, housing, that language is there still about, we have one residential group home.
Yes, and I didn't actually. Yes, and I didn't actually get a chance to update that for this version because I hadn't finished my, looking into it at the time, but I will, I will take that. Anything on A6? Okay, A7 is just where I updated that language on potable water to reflect that the city is adopting the county standard of 115 gallons per capita per day, but that the actual water use is projected to be 79 gallons per capita. And that table that I originally had in your goals, objectives and policies, I just moved it here.
Why do we need the actual water use?
Just shows you're being good stewards of your water supply. And, I'm making it. Okay, that is all I have.
That's excellent, to Linda.
Thank you.
Are there any further questions? If we have Linda, any board member?
I don't know, but I wouldn't bring that up again with that for so much.
Okay, now we're gonna ask what was.
Yeah.
That's a good suggestion.
The whole concept of we have a county planning organization. And each community is supposed to develop its transportation facilities in direct correlation to its density and traffic flow and what happened. And we've got this source out in the middle of the county called Bel Air Beach that has not increased its road capacity one iota since it started. I mean, it's always been two lanes all the way through. But these high-density hotels are still going up. Weekly, there's a new one going up. And it continues and they're not doing anything with the roads or the ability to handle that traffic, other than to siphon it off through other communities. So that's why I was asking Randy before, who's the agency that looks at these comprehensive plans and says, yeah, that makes sense and they're following it and they're doing the right thing? When Clearwater Beach obviously isn't, so...
So you're saying Clearwater should be forced somehow to handle the traffic through their own area without having it bleed off everywhere else? And we're, we're the ones who are on the short end of stick because we've said this is gonna be the, the type of city we want to be? Why should we handle everybody else's traffic?
We can't determine our own future, someone else is going to.
And my recommendation is, again, to speak with your Ford Pinellas representative. You can come as citizens to be heard at our Ford Pinellas board meetings. You can come any month and talk about any topic. Ford Pinellas is a countywide agency that does intergovernmental coordination and does transportation planning and land use. So we are the ones that need to hear your voice.
So as I was asking Randy, is there any governmental body or agency or someone that looks at these comprehensive plans and sees violations like that or sees sore thumb situations like that and can actually go and say, hey, you're not living up, you've got to do something and do it now rather than we just talk about it all the time?
We don't have an enforcement mechanism, so at my level, we can't make the city do anything. The state Department of Economic Opportunity has, if, if a local government is violating their own comprehensive plan and citizens raise a challenge, then they have the ability to do some enforcement. Although, and I'm gonna look at you Randy, I believe it has to be citizens of that local government raising the issue, is that correct?
Certainly, yes, as it relates to consistency challenges and what, you know, just for clarity, what you're considering a violation, that is your subjective conclusion that it is in fact a violation. It may not actually be violative of their procedures, maybe violative of notions of good neighbors or, you know, responsible stewardship, but it is not, that those notions are not necessarily legal violations, which is a different analysis altogether. The reality is that you have various jurisdictions, probably about 11 that I can think of that are all along a county road. And so your ability as any one jurisdiction to regulate what another's doing on their little stretch when they're better in their own regard is admittedly limited. Your frustration is not, that doesn't mean it's not valid. I'm just telling you that, you know, the, the idea that we have identified a violation is presumptuous in a general sense, but in a sense of we can do better in Pinellas County. She's saying, please let Ford Pinellas know that, give us that feedback. But we are also the most densely populated county in the state of Florida.
So do we think we should suggest to council that there be a committee specifically set up? I've got a few asked the residents, they'd say yes. But a group of people or a person, even if it's a professional person, we are, it goes to this board and points out these issues and also, you know, get these traffic numbers, real traffic numbers and take them and should we suggest to council that we need somebody or person to do this for us?
This is, this is coming under our suggestions.
Right.
Let's continue with...
With you?
Yeah. It can, at the end, when I want to get everybody's suggestions. This number four, review of proposed ordinance to amend section 94 zoning. Where is this at?
Behind it all.
So it's separately distinct from the comp plan discussion. With all deference to the chair, my recommendation, if there's any other input that relates to the comprehensive plan, that we make sure that we've resolved that before we move to the next agenda item.
So before we go to four, finish up on...
I'll finish you, you have the four, I go to five. I'm on four.
No, we're still on three.
We're still on three.
Well, just for, for clarity and the record and for the, for the benefit of the chair, item four is a proposed ordinance that has to do with the land development code that is, has nothing to do with the comp plan. Item three is your comp plan review. And at the outset of this discourse, we suggested we need to make sure we have consensus direction. We certainly got that on any, everything Ms. Fisher said. I wasn't clear, I don't think staff is clear whether any of the members had other things they wished to raise relative to the comp plan specifically, because that was sort of the second half of this.
Okay, it was backwards. We can put that under suggestions and we can follow up after what Linda just said, with each board member making their suggestions on adding to the comprehensive plan from their observations.
Right, yeah, so, so the question is, are there individual board members who have additions that need to, to discuss?
So I'll start right now with, are my chip, well, yes, I will.
So I had a question on capital improvements. Is that where we would, what I'm specifically interested in doing is seeing that the city looks at renewable energy opportunities. This is brought about by the discussion on generator. Are there other things that, that the city could be doing? Solar power on this building that long-term offset our, our operating costs and, and give us better reliability in the event of a power loss? Is that where this should, could be? Is that something that, that is in the city's best interest to explore?
For those who remember when former mayor charged the planning attorneys board with looking at all the properties and revenue, we had a whole package in there where we had brought in a solar device company and that information is the revenue we generate is still in that packet, isn't it? Patty, I'd have to pull mine out and look at it, but yes, solar to a battery bank, you know, these new Rassler battery banks.
But we could even go net, what's called a, a net metering system, which means you recognize the, the savings instantaneously in that, in that, in that month. And, and the cost of going solar has come way down, way down. And now with this new infrastructure bill that was passed, the incentives, I don't know if they apply to a, a city or not, but there's a 30% credit that, that you're eligible for when you install these systems. We did it at the house, we put 73 panels on and we dropped from $650 a month down to $44 a month. Plus, we get a check back because we're generating way more wattage than we use, we'll get a check back every March. And if these things are available and we're looking for ways to reduce our, our overhead, is, is renewable energy something that we should explore? Not, not for revenue generation, I remember that. It, it's more to offset our, our operating costs. And the battery, if you went to a battery backup, yes, it could give you resource during hurricane and power loss. The batteries aren't, we've got a ways to go, I think, before batteries are advanced and affordable and dependable, probably another five or six years to go yet. But getting onto a net metering could, could be really beneficial to the city's operating costs.
Well, this is a suggestion coming from you, from the board, as a board member.
To, to look at, at renewable energy options.
Sure.
In, in, in our day-to-day operations. Clean energy.
That is a policy you can include in your cap plan for Minnesota and I would recommend to keep the language very general and I could drop something that...
Yeah, that's where I'm getting at, is it'd have to be general and then, then get more into, even though, in fact, you could even get into where you've got EVs on the, we don't run miles on our rigs around here on our trucks and stuff like that. And so at the time, we allocate reserves for, for the next new truck, should we be looking at something that's more renewable based rather than petroleum based?
Okay. Rudy?
I'm done, yep.
You're not ready yet?
I've added everything I want to add today.
Is, is there a consensus endorsement of that policy objective concerning the pursuit of renewable resources?
Yes, I second that.
No, he can't do that.
I wasn't trying, I wasn't trying to persuade over the beginning, just trying to make sure before we move on that we have...
What I was gonna do was put them all in that group and then put on, one of them at one time. Has a suggestion.
It's your means.
Thank you. You had something, yes you did, that you wanted to emphasize. No?
What, what was?
You forgot.
I mean, I've covered too many points, what, was it something I said previously?
No, it was in reference to the traffic that was, that should be suggested completely by from this board.
Yes, one that we have someone who's a direct contact or is direct contact or actively in touch with the board, transportation and look for any ways the city can correct some of the issues, mitigate some of the issues.
Of the bridge.
Yeah, on the bridge, on Gulf Boulevard, traffic, whatever, yep.
There are policies drafted already about coordinating with Ford Pinellas and neighboring jurisdictions to address that issue, but if you'd like, I can put it again in the intergovernmental coordination.
I believe what you were suggesting is there's a specific committee or person within our city that would be addressing that rather than leaving it in there generically.
Or look into, a lot of times you're working with these governmental boards or in these governmental entity, you need someone who's been there, done that and is almost a consultant level and look into the cost of such a thing, even if it's a, you know, very defined basis.
Okay.
I have, relating to the traffic situation, I don't know if we can do it, just a thought. Traffic light at 22nd Avenue, which is only to be used during high-peak times, the majority of Bel Air Beach residents can get in and out. Their, I think 19th Street has access to 22nd. So there, there are some streets that will not have access to 22nd. Maybe that would help the traffic flow a little bit?
Yeah, 18th South, with 18 to the causeways, they're just loops, they're gonna have that problem.
But possibly when there's gaps.
From 19th.
Exactly.
Harrison can use that light.
If the light would create a gap on, on, if this traffic's coming down this way and the light at 22nd comes on so that the people can come out of 22nd, the folks to the, to the south of that will get some benefit out of that depending on what's coming north.
Exactly. There would be gaps that they could make, make that left turn. Just let it roll around in your head and just shoot some holes through it.
Let me just point to, when I was on the bridge committee and the bridge was built, the condos wanted a traffic light at the base of the bridge because they can't get out, get solid lines of traffic. They're elderly, most of them are elderly, they can't get out, so they petitioned the county to put a light there. The county said from their traffic studies that it doesn't qualify to have a light. If they can't get the light, I guarantee we can't get a light based on whatever standard they're using.
But it's worth it.
Well, it's just a suggestion.
No, no, we go back, it's just a suggestion and then we go back to those county and we get, we, at peak times, we get...
So along the lines of what you're saying, we're, we're being impacted because of poor infrastructure planning by Clearwater and what's going on to the south. That's forcing people around this way. The issue is how do we get the county to support us and mitigate the traffic problems that they have allowed to occur? And I think that's where your committee person or whatever might come in and talk to Pinellas Forward or whatever.
Forward Pinellas.
Okay.
So the only thing I would just have to say with you, yours and yours, is that we explore, the city explore funding sources for the traffic situation and undergrounding because I think you brought it up last time, had, had there been a discussion about grants or whatever for undergrounding, I think we use Pinellas, Penny for Pinellas now for Gulf Boulevard, then the precedent's already set for the residential communities to have to pay out of pocket if there's any way to keep that from happening. I mean, we bit the dust and paid for ours, but there's a lot of people who can't afford that and our population is getting older and we need to think about that.
Okay.
So explore funding to assist with the managing of traffic flow?
And undergrounding.
Oh, utilities.
And utilities.
The city should take, you know, all funding and grant opportunities in its, in the implementation of its own term plan.
So that would be under capital improvements.
Historically, we've done a fairly good job of that. When you start to look at what grants are actually available to us and then in some of the cases, what you have to give up for that grant, it really isn't worth it. I know Lynn was very diligent about that and you're pretty knowledgeable about it. Would you agree?
Yeah, I would agree.
So how did we get Penny for Pinellas to give us money for Gulf Boulevard? Is that...
Well, they have been given this significant funding for beautification and lumped under that was undergrounding, right? So we have been getting is just our share based on 24 aisles of beach and who's getting the money and so forth, it's just...
Okay, we've got four from there and I'd like to add one. As a matter of record, it's in relevance to the traffic flow and it was, there should be some way to put up some kind of a sign or something on the Gulf Boulevard to let the side street... the side streets come on, yield, something, yield to the side streets, yield to the residents so they can get out on the street along that, that line. And off the record, it just surprised me that we got so congested and then they put palm trees in the middle of the street, and it just wondered where, when you exit the city with a hurricane, you had three ways to go out, three lanes going out, now you got two. I just don't understand some of the situations. It looks pretty, but if you gotta leave, you gotta leave, so...
Plus, what does an ambulance do who comes out on Gulf Boulevard and was, we got bumper to bumper traffic in both lanes and it's trying to get to a street to get to somebody? And there's an island in the middle of the...
There's an island with a tree staring at you.
I think you could hold this.
What I'd like to do is, right now, call for a motion to accept the suggestions to be referred from this committee on our comprehensive plan.
Well, you're gonna put those in anyhow, right? So it's...
Yeah, we got approval.
Subject to your consensus direction and also subject to what a comp plan is and what that language looks like. And I only say that because three of the recommendations were specific, here's how we can manage the traffic with some light at this intersection or something like that, and that's not what a comp plan typically reflects. It would reflect a vision towards find innovative solutions and alternative means to address congestion and traffic maintenance in the city's corporate boundaries, language like that.
So what do you say?
So she, you know, working together will find language like that. The proposals that were closer to just general comp plan visioning was the exploration of renewable energy solutions and exploration of additional funding sources or resources for, you know, traffic and integrative, innovative solutions or undergrounding solutions, as you've said, so. I just wish to make clear that, provided your consensus direction is like, yeah, we're generally good with everything we just said, what the end product might, will be, won't be, and put a light at 19th, for example.
Sounds like an attorney. Imagine it. The audacity.
Well, I have a motion that we vote for consensus on the topics that were made and have Ford Penellas and Patty draft them up.
And Randy.
Do I hear a second?
I second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now, I don't know what this review of ordinance, section 94 zoning, is on this agenda. Would you like to explain that to the committee?
Have to, Mr. Chair. So that completes the discussion on the comprehensive plan. Ms. Fisher, thank you for your time on that and for this body's meaningful discourse. As a reminder, there will be a third hearing on that, which will be noticed in everything else. This ordinance is, some ordinances are bottom-up, which is to say a resident or some other need says, hey, I'd like this considered. Some are just the commission says this is what we want to do, and some are top-down, as I would, as I would qualify them. This is more of a top-down ordinance. You've received this shell for an ordinance to discuss a policy change. Your management and administration has encountered a few land use situations where permitted construction or potentially permitted construction has run into some confusion because of the way the code is presently written as it relates to the setback limitations, most specifically for Bellevue Islands, Bellevue Islands Estates, and the way that language historically has appeared in the code. And so management, presently, for example, there is one variance hearing where they built to what the city's contracted engineer interpreted the code to mean based on a plain meaning, and they built within those parameters, it was later discovered, actually, if you read this, cross-reference this and cross-reference that, you get a slightly different number. And so to resolve any confusion by city staff, administration, or property owners seeking to comply with the code, trying to make the code more clear and explicit, so this was, I did not, while I facilitated this, this was not at my urging, this was at the manager's urging as the administrator for the town, chief administrative officer, looking at, hey, now we've had two issues in X amount of months that relate to the same provision, let's fix this provision so we don't have this issue continue, and that's what you have before you. As to its specifics, if you don't mind, what you have before you, normally when we do a strike-through underline, it's not called out in red text like that track change format. Given the density of how this is written with all these tables, anything you see in red is new. Everything you see in black is old. If it's a strike-through, you're deleting, if it's underlined, you're adding. So one of the issues you had in your code was Bellevue was spelled wrong in a few places, and someone's saying, oh, this doesn't apply to me, I live on Bellevue spelled V U E, not V I W, so this shouldn't, even though there is no V I W. And so you say, okay, well, then let's just fix that scriptener's error, that typo. And then also, there was a place where it said, well, this is for Bellevue Estates, I live on Bellevue Estates Island, and so this doesn't apply to me. Well, we need to resolve that missing word, island, to make sure it is explicit. And then also the way certain lots were called out and the way the table was written was a little confusing, so we set that out a little better. And then finally, there was, the way, the way it read was, here's Bellevue Estates Island, here are the numbers, except these certain lots, and then there was a provision at the very bottom that was like, but also this. And it was not, while you could harmonize it, harmonizing it became unnecessarily complex. And to avoid that confusion of, if you're the engineer, which Bellevue Estates Island column am I looking, or row am I looking at? Am I looking at, as it reads presently, there were three places you could be looking. This tries to clean that up so staff and property owners alike could resolve this. So this is management proposing a solution to avoid confusion in the code.
So it's just a name change?
It's a name change, it is the, it's a correction. In some communities, you might have a staffer say, this is a housekeeping matter. I try not to say that because it does substantively change your code in the way it reads, but it is, it's tantamount to a housekeeping matter to allow for clarity in the code. And Kyle, defer to you in any instance.
So this is actually taken from the MUNI code online. We pulled up the old ordinance and looked at the minutes surrounding the approval of it, but that ordinance actually had Bellevue spelled correctly on it, it got misspelled in the process of being codified, so I don't, I mean...
We're just, but then that part else...
Yeah, so we're gonna submit it this way so that if it gets approved, that when we submit it to MUNI code, it'll make sense because this is the current format to have it on. Then there's that, if you go to page three at the top, where it says Bellevue Estates Island, and it says first, second, and third additions, and then below it, it has the, except the following lots.
That's the only thing they're talking about.
Is there any downside to this? I mean, for somebody who's...
No, it does, well...
Does this change anybody's approach from one property to another or anything like that?
The problem we were having is this very bottom section where it says Bellevue Estates Island, and it doesn't, it just says Bellevue Estates Island and lists the setbacks. That did not apply to anything, but that's what got interpreted by the engineer. So the new bill actually was given a lower, a shorter setback requirement than it should have had.
So the short answer is no, it doesn't, it's not more restrictive as drafted, it is not intended to be more restrictive. In fact, it's removing a more, a provision which was applied in a more strict way, and this doesn't affect anybody who has already done construction and been permitted. This is for, on a going-forward basis, as they continue to permit properties, the setbacks that were already in the code, the only place that we're adding, editing any numbers is the final row, Bellevue Estates Island, which was conflicting. You can see, for example, it gives a seven, the third column from the right, where it's deleting 7.5. Ordinarily, you'd get a 10-foot setback in Bellevue Estates Island, but then this other provision said, well, no, it's 7.5. And the question became, how do we, which one is it? Is it 10 or is it 7.5? You've got two there. Why have that redundancy? What is that achieving if, other than confusing people? And so the code was intended to cut that, this revision would eliminate that confusion.
So somebody will now, going forward, have to abide by a 10-foot setback, not a seven-and-a-half foot?
Unless they're on the specified lots.
Unless they're on the exclusive.
Because it says, except the following lots of Bellevue Estates Island, when you use only a single lots, and it gives a whole bunch of them, and then says, which shall be 7.5 feet for side setbacks. Which is already in your...
So the only thing that will come from this is that whatever homes are already there now, instead of having a house that hits the property line seven-and-a-half feet in, will now have to setback 10 feet, the new one would.
If, provided it is not on any of those enumerated lots, I just, I want to, I want to be forthright with you, doesn't change anything if it's on those lots, but let's say you're building on lot five, which is not on that list, assuming there's a lot five there to begin with. Assuming you're building on lot five, your side setback will very clearly be 10 feet. But if you are on lot nine, your side setback will very clearly be 7.5 feet, and we won't have to reconcile it with some other provision that says Bellevue Estates Island at the bottom, spelled differently.
So in essence, this is a recommendation from the county, city attorney, to...
City manager.
What?
From the city manager.
Through the attorney.
Sure.
I prepared it at the, at the request of the manager.
Yes, sir.
All right. I see no problem with it. Does any of the board members see any problem with this? I call for a motion to accept the recommendation. Boo.
Second.
Any discussion?
Before you take a vote, you should take public comment, Mr. Chair.
Can't hear you.
Before you take any vote, you should take public comment, Mr. Man, as I'm an officer.
I know, he was here, he haunts me, he walks right behind me when I'm at a door. I would call for public comment before we take a final vote.
Thank you. Bill Laskey, Biscus Drive, only comment I have is probably for future, and it aligns to some of the previous discussion, you still have in here these requirements that fall under Bel Air Beach Yacht Estates. Is that something that the ordinance should have moved forward, where again, come back to the planning and zoning, if their recommendations go forward, to remove the marina as these designations on setbacks and, I'm just curious how that ties in, because there's language in here about the marina. Is that just a future issue?
Yeah, it's just always been there, but I like where you went tonight with your discussion. Is that something for future, Randy, that they would get another revision to this, or does that always stay that way?
I always like to ask my board first before I answer this comment. So this is addressing, there's sort of a, the way land use law works is not always clean. One of those clean things is this is all based on platted lots, your plats dating back, and your plats might use things like Bel Air Beach re-revised lots of one through seven, and the yacht language, I presume, deals with how those lots were planted. If we do a rezoning, if the city does endeavor to do what this body has maybe suggested of rezoning the property, redesignating it, and there's nothing else that meets that plat, we would, we would then address that, we would certainly have to harmonize all other land use restrictions applicable in that rezoning and make sure they're harmonized. You could take it out of the code if, if, for example, it's replatted, well, and there's nothing called that anymore, now it's called the Bel Air Beach Municipal District or something, then there's no yacht district and we would remove it from the code. My firm's approach when handling land use issues or any code issues is while you're under the hood, fix everything, don't just change an oxygen sensor or something. So with that in mind, that, that question goes beyond the charge in this ordinance, but yes, if we went through that, you would have to look at all land use designations in the code for a property.
Thank you, Chairman.
You're welcome. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Request passed. Any other further information or requests, et cetera, come before you support.
Just out of the budget, just out of the budget and caution, have we done or said anything or suggested to do anything that would have any impact on the state ordinance saying any changes you're gonna make will impact your ability to restrict the RBOs?
I will have to conduct a comprehensive review once we have, we take all these comments that we receive today, there's gonna be an ordinance that you'll consider at your next meeting that we duly notice. I will conduct that review once we have that ordinance. My, my instinct is no, based most especially on your receding away from even weight, no pun intended, waiting into the waters of transient lodging definitions and the like. I would have to make sure that I do a secondary and likely tertiary look at that as it goes to the commission, as I know that this community and every community is honed in on that trust and believe editorialization here. After the five-hour meeting I had last week in another jurisdiction, I'm not particularly interested in creating more for no good reason. And also, jokes aside, recognizing the policy priorities of this community, its residents, its commission, its stated interest in that, we will do everything to make sure that we are, we keep our eye on that issue.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, we'd like to, Patty, when, when is the next meeting?
Your next meeting?
Is it time, what's the time element?
Well, we're looking at Linda giving her time.
Okay.
Randy to review, right?
Yeah, it will, it will certainly be at least three weeks out just based on ad running, papers don't print like they used to, and also having content for them to advertise. So it will likely be in the next three to four weeks, and we will follow up with you. But do they have a regularly scheduled meeting time for...
No, I do not.
Okay. So we will be, staff will coordinate with you rather than pick an arbitrary date. Right now, that we don't know we can satisfy, but again, I defer to the board.
But there's no time for straight on us as far as our duty?
No, sir, not presently. Ms. Fisher is communicating with the E O, it's my understanding, so they're aware of where we are in the process.
I want to personally thank Linda for making it across the bridge, and our neighbor coming in and showing his delightful input because he's helpful, he cares, I like that, and the city manager, and the attorney who's...
Of less utility.
See? There's always that little action thing. And the board members itself. Now, if anybody does know a person, would like to continue on the board in place of Rudy, and he's not leaving until this is all done, I got a promise of that, or we shoot his door. And thank you very much. I just declare the meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Thanks, Linda.